I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, the coordinator call the roll?
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Allenz?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Present.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.[63.19][63.19](laughter)
With Southern present, we have a quorum.
Well, good. I'm glad you're all present. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod and Connor who are in the back, behind the scenes, working to produce our broadcast on Channel 20. Thank you, gentlemen, for the good work that you do. We are now on to the petitions and communication portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to our board policy, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow for sufficient time for the board, business of the board, and to conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would be otherwise confidential in such openings. We only have one speaker tonight, but we do have a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes, so we thank you for your interest and cooperation with our guidelines. We have one speaker tonight. It is Kevin Ryan. And there should be a little button there to turn the microphone on.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the community, thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Kevin Ryan. I'm a teacher at Eisenhower Middle School and also one of the union ARs from the building. The teachers of Eisenhower Middle School would like to submit 41 signatures in support of the petition earlier filed by Flynn Middle School on the issue of delayed start times to support the three-tiered busing system that you will be discussing or emboding on later, I believe it is, in the agenda, item 13, letter B. The effects that a later start time will have, and 15 minutes doesn't sound like all that much, but I come here today because I ducked out early on a wrestling meet where I haven't gotten out to a lot of wrestling meets, and the kids that I have that take photos for wrestling meets for the yearbook, well, they're wrestlers. So, you know, sometimes they get a little wrapped up in the meet and thinks, you know, we don't get enough coverage, so I like to go in a couple of times and help out. 15 minutes added on, when we're behind, it seems like a lot of other schools in dismissal times, adds a lot to extracurriculars. We are, right now, in a situation where many of our clubs have gone dormant. This year, Eisenhower was privileged to send two students to Nationals for Lego Leagues. Just before break, my publication students got to do the concession stands at the Lego League event that was hosted at Eisenhower Middle School. We also usually take this opportunity to get some great action shots of the Lego League team that we have doing table runs and doing their skits. Unfortunately, we didn't have a team this year because we didn't have a coach, and we're short a lot of coaching positions, and we're short a lot of teachers. So, we would like you to consider maintaining the schedule as it is. Until we can solve our staffing problems, we think that a further delay will make it more difficult to fill those positions.
Thank you.
May I have you give this to?
Our coordinator is right here, Mrs. Fromm.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the floor then to board member comments. Is there any board member comments at this time? Seeing none, then, we'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda item, including the following consent items: meeting minutes of December 11, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, and purchase orders, contracts under $10,000, construction bid request log, travel, the banking services bid recommendation, the other consent items, including the workers' compensation settlement agreement with W.J., the monthly investment report for November of 2018, financial results for November of 2018, the RPS managed work change order report, the new school construction change order logs, and the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Segal?
Six C and D.
Six B? Oh, C and D. Okay. Any others? Mrs. McCulloch?
Can you pull 7A, please?
7A, okay. Okay, uh, the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not polled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Allenz?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and I'll take a motion in a second to approve item 6C, accounts payable.
So moved.
Do you want to do those together or separate?
Together.
Together, okay. So, the motion for C and D, together?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Dixon. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items 6C and D, which are accounts payable report and purchase orders report.
Mr. Allenz?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Abstained.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one abstained.
Thank you, I'll now take a motion in a second then for the consent item 7A, which is the RFP for banking services.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
Just trying to read back on this.
Okay.
I was going to ask Ms. Yar to make a comment. One of the concerns we had with the CARF was the expenditure for, that was for credit card fees, or what was that for? And that's not even captured in this change of, because this is about Fed funds, right? So, can you explain to us, I guess, give us an overall picture of why we went out for a bid on this and a change? It wasn't just timing, you were looking for a better rate and...
So, in the last year and a half to two years, I've been negotiating with the bank on, every time the Fed moves?
Yeah.
I call them the next day and say, can you move my interest rate unless I will reinvest somewhere else? And we've worked that out. This really puts it in writing that we are tied to a Fed fund, so I no longer have to call and make sure that we get that. The bank has been really great at doing that, but, again, it's nice to have this in writing and have it in a contract, so we were able to do that. I also want to make sure that we're getting the best return on our investments. We do, we are in a period of time where we actually are earning investment dollars, so I wanted to make sure that we're getting the best rate that we can. So, I did look at the rate and I looked at the expenses to get the net return on investment, so I did that analysis. Associated Bank has been an excellent partner with us, and they did come out on top with those return on investment as well.
And then, how about the whole credit card situation? Because...
We have, we have gone out for a separate RFP on the credit cards, so we're doing a separate one, and actually, we've reviewed that today, and we'll still be reviewing that. We have a couple of questions for a couple of vendors on that, so we did a separate.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, I should have asked this in advance, my apologies. It said this committee had the top three replied. Were the others, what was the criteria for that, just out of curiosity?
Mr. Youngblood has that criteria with him tonight, so I'll let him talk about that criteria that we used.
The RFP process that we use, we lay it out clearly in the RFP, so everybody understands what it is, but we evaluate all of the proposals we receive, and then we narrow it down to the best ones so we can give further presentations in more detail on their proposals. We do that by evaluating all of the original proposals based on a matrix of evaluation criteria that's weighted based on its importance.
So...
One of the things I'll add to that, one of the criterias for us is when we can submit files. How many days in advance does this file have to be submitted? Typically, for payroll, which is, you know, our biggest expense, we can, with Associated and with a couple other banks, we can submit up to, there's a last scoop at 8:00 at night, so the last time we can submit is 7:30. We have had to utilize that, and so we can also be deposited into our employees' bank accounts the very next day. So, a couple of the banks, or one of the banks in particular, I know offhand, and possibly two, only could have a cutoff a lot earlier than that, like 6:00, and that is just too tight. If we end up, you know, having a processing problem or whatnot, we need a little more flexibility for that.
So, the real answer to criteria are customer service kinds of factors, excuse me, such as the time cutoff? Are there others? Are there financials, or are all these around processing?
Well, we first looked at return on investment, and then after that, we looked at, if it was close, we would look at customer service. We want to make sure our customer service needs were not also, not just return on investment, but really customer service needs. So, right now, we have 24/7 support with the Associated Bank and with holidays and those types of things. Sometimes, we do need to access the 24/7 support. Some of the banks that, you know, were really, would answer our phone calls but would not be able to really act on some needs that we might have.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, just a quick one. So, you know, there's been some early science reports of potential downturn in the economy in the next, I don't know, whatever, you never know. Does the investment strategy change down the road? For example, they've talked about the inversion curve for your rates changing and so forth. Does your investment strategy for those funds, will that change if anything changes down the road?
Yes, I'm looking at those investments on a monthly, you know, basis, really, sometimes more often than monthly, when things are changing in the market. So, I will be presenting a treasures report upcoming the next month, which will give you a picture of what the, how we're diversified, how, why you see a lot of money sitting in money market funds while we're, I can't really beat some of those money market funds, I haven't been able to beat those. We do, we have a period of time where we, this is our low cash period right now that we're in through April. So, our lowest cash period on our cash flow sheet is really April is our lowest point, just because of tax dollars, that type of thing. So, we really look at utilizing them, and we have added a million dollars extra in interest revenue, just based on negotiating with a bank, what's happening with their interest rates, and really taking advantage of that. So, I will always be looking at better opportunities to get the best return on our investments and protecting tax dollars.
Okay, any other comments? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 7A, the RFP for banking services.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Allenz?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, we're now on to closed session consent agenda items, including the following: the HR organizational report and addendum, and the student discipline items, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The following students, 2039, 4242, 4243, student 4245, student 4246, are expelled for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year. Students 4239, 4240, 4241, 4247, 4250 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of the 1920 school year. Student 4244 and 4249 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2019-20 school year. And the suspension for student 5006 is affirmed. The following students received EIA's: students 3723, 3724, 3725, 3726, 3727, 3728, 3729. 3730 was pulled by administration, 3731, 3733, 3734, and 3735. Also, student 1036 was pulled by administration. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of closed session consent items.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Allenz?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
I'm going to ask that our human resources team give a presentation this evening in lieu of me giving a presentation. Thanks.
Mr. Zetiker?
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett, for allowing us to use your time, board members. We wanted to take the opportunity to update the board and the community on some of the increased achievement and efficiencies and outcomes that the Human Resources Department has engaged in around teachers, from recruitment to development and retention. And so, I have members of each one of my departments here to present from each perspective, and we will then allow time for some questions afterwards on the things that have been presented. So, again, this will be over recruitment, talent acquisition, and talent development. And so, with that, I will turn this first part of the presentation over to Claire Ferguson, our recruiting manager.
Much of my presentation is a brief overview of what I discussed about a month ago at the board meeting, and then I'll go into further depth about prior practices and where we will be going in the future as far as recruitment is concerned. Previously, within the recruitment office, there was a lack of stability within the role, which led to a reassessment of the duties with our executive director of talent acquisition. When that reassessment was done, the role was broken down into several different parts, and my role was created from that. That allows us to be more efficient and just to have streamlined processes. One of the big changes that came with that reassessment of duties was our clinical and student teacher placement. Previously, all of the clinical and student teachers were school-site-based, so the principals worked directly with the university to coordinate the observation hours and to select the student teachers. Now, we are able to centralize that within the recruitment team, specifically the recruitment coordinator, and that includes all of our aspiring teachers, as well as the RU Pathway students. This allows for a streamlined onboarding process for those students and greater familiarity with them. So, for example, we had a slew of students this semester who had one-to-one time with myself and the recruitment coordinator to talk about the next steps, what it would be to apply and become a full-time teacher, and of those students, three of them have started this semester in various positions throughout the district. This has also allowed us to expand on our partnerships with colleges and universities and get greater familiarity with them, which will lead to expansion of the AT program and additional universities placing student teachers with us. We previously have talked about expanding the aspiring teacher program to additional universities outside of NIU and Rockford University. Grand Canyon University will continue to place students with us, and we have a student who is looking to start from Kansas State in the fall in the aspiring teacher program. University partnerships that we have are growing, as I just said, so one of the things that we have been able to do is get greater familiarity with the faculty, and we will visit them, have meetings with them to talk about what we are doing at RPS, as well as what it would mean to partner with us and place those clinical and student teachers. And, again, that just leads to expansion of all of our programs. Some recruitment events that we attend are all of the major education job fairs within Illinois. Previously, we have attended HBCU-specific education fairs, such as Jackson State, and then the Nashville Consortium, which was several different HBCUs, all housed centrally. That fair will not be held again this year, so we are looking to expand in investigating steps in Atlanta, in some Midwestern HBCUs. There's one in Ohio that we're specifically looking into going to, as well as Alabama, Arkansas, and a few other areas. All of the job fairs are just now starting to be planned for the spring. All of those invites are trickling in now as universities prepare their students to graduate and prepare for them to apply to different schools and for employment full-time. We also will continue our bilingual recruitment in Puerto Rico several times a year. We will continue participating in the teaching program with Spain, and then we have been invited for speed interview events, panel discussions, MACH interviews, as well as partnering with our communication department for different community-based events and local organization fairs.
Claire, if I could jump in just to expand a little bit in terms of our minority recruitment events. The board was updated a little over a week ago on our recruitment events with Puerto Rico, Spain, compared to some of the other events that we've attended, say, in Michigan and some of our HBCU events that Claire referenced. We are still continuing to expand our HBCU and specifically African-American recruitment for teaching. We understand that that is a great need that we have in our district. Our return on investment that we've had so far, attending our HBCUs and other events geared specifically towards African-American, haven't resulted in any return on investment as of now. We need to continue with that footprint and continue to build and keep our name down there, as well as looking at other options. Claire mentioned looking at more Midwest opportunities. I know there are some in the East Coast as well. We've talked at length with the board where the number-one reason why, when we talk to candidates down in the South, why they don't come, is weather. And so, if we can get connection with Ohio and East Coast, we can take that variable out. You know, we have several long-range strategies with our RU Pathway, where we spend a considerable amount of money investing in our own children. We invest money into tutors for our children, because some of our students, minority students, have yet to qualify to get into Rockford University, so we see that as a hurdle and one that we're tackling. So, we're going to continue to keep this as a focal point for our recruitment. We'll have, we have goals set around it, we have focus, it's something that is part of a weekly conversation that we have. I also want to also let the board know that I was also selected as one of 20 people across the state of Illinois to represent ISBE for the diverse learner-ready teacher network, and we are tackling the diverse pipeline from PK to 12, all the way to higher ed in the state of Illinois. And so, that work begins next month, so I'll have the opportunity to give input around legislation, policy change, so that we can attract more students of color into the field of education, both as early as at PK 12 and then what our institutions of higher ed doing, to make sure that we are taking down as many hurdles as possible to attract as much as we can in terms of a diverse staff. We will also continue to partner with Earl Dodson and his team in community events and community organizations as we look at where else can we go, what else can we do in terms of outreach and recruitment efforts. And so, we know that we are not where we need to be, but we also know that we are going to be committed to trying and strategizing to make sure that not only do we have a long-term strategy, but we also have a short-term strategy as well.
The last piece of recruitment is the previously presented recruitment incentives that have now been approved. So, our hard-to-fill positions will be offered, any one of those three incentives, as well as the completion of the area discount dining and membership card. We have several restaurant partners for that card already, and then the guaranteed sixth assignment for any eligible new hires. So, as my team is out and we're recruiting and we find candidates that we like, who we think will be a great fit for RPS, we are sending all of that information to the principals who have vacancies and letting them review, schedule an interview, and once they have decided that they would like to offer the candidate that position, then Sarah Jesky's team jumps in, and they're the ones who make the offer. So, I will let Sarah take over in the next part to talk about our talent acquisition team.
Good evening.
Want to introduce yourself?
Sorry, Sarah Jesky, HR director.
Okay.
Talent acquisition is one of the functions that I oversee. Talent acquisition covers the postings and placement of teaching positions or other vacant positions, as well as the job offers and the new hire onboarding appointments. Previously, all of our recommendation for hire forms were manual, three-part carbon forms that a principal would handwrite and board mail to HR. Then, once it was received in HR, it would be placed on an HR generalist desk for processing, but the HR generals were out in school buildings, so they weren't always returning to their desks to process these timely. And one of the changes that we've made is we've implemented the electronic recommendation for hire system, so the principals know exactly what fields need to be filled out on these forms. We have required fields, so they can't submit incomplete forms, and it's all electronic, so it's guaranteed that they're legible. We're not trying to decipher handwriting on these paper forms that were sent in. And then, once they're submitted, they're instantly in HR's hands, and whether a generalist is out in a school building or a specialist is right here in the office, we're able to reach out and start making those job offers much more quickly than previously. And so, switching to the electronic format allows greater accuracy and faster turnaround times. We've also implemented job offer scripts, as well as offer letter templates, so that as we're getting those offers out, we're communicating consistently the same information to all candidates, and we don't have to stop and retype and retype and retype every time we have a letter to put out. Moving forward, we're looking at continued process improvement. We're actually working with the process improvement department to identify additional areas that we can improve, as well as system upgrades. The online applicant tracking system and our Business Plus system are doing updates that they'll be able to talk to each other, have less manual entry and input things to, again, speed the process along and improve accuracy, as well as taking steps to improve the whole new hire experience, which includes, in the past, we used to do individual new hire appointments, and we only had one specialist who was trained in completing these. So, you can imagine then the bottleneck in the process during the peak hiring times if there's only one person who can accommodate this influx of people. So, we now have four talent specialists who are cross-trained in all functional areas, and we do group appointments, so one talent specialist can accommodate 15 new applicants to be able to move them through, again, the process a little bit more quickly, as well as ensure then all applicants are getting the same consistent welcoming message with all the information they need to get started in their positions. We've also included the security department and the benefits team in those new hire group appointment presentations, so that instead of, previously, you'd come in for your one-on-one appointment, we'd cover what HR needs, and then we'd send you over to benefits to meet with someone, then we'd send you upstairs to security. Now, everyone comes to that appointment, and we take care of everything all at once for you, and you walk away, it's done, and you're ready to be working in one of the buildings. Once we click "hire" on that rec for hire and complete all of the steps, we've also implemented just system routing, so when we click that button, a notification automatically goes to payroll to get you all set up for your first check, a notification automatically goes to IT and IS, so that they can start setting up your email address and have your system access ready to go. And then, another one of the steps is that a notification automatically goes to the talent development team, which Diana will step up and speak about, but once that notification goes out, then immediately a member of the talent development team is reaching out to start setting up onboarding appointments and training appointments, and I will let Diana speak to that.
Good evening. I'm Diana Ald, I'm executive director of talent development. So, what Sarah has talked to you about is something that, as I walked into this position last year, I took a quick analysis of what things probably needed to be relooked at and maybe reimagined around talent development in general, and one of those things was to help the talent acquisition team, help our teachers become more prepared before they start their initial training at orientation, what we call our three-day orientation, and also Institute Day. What we found... What we found was that many teachers were coming in last minute. They weren't, they weren't equipped with devices. They did not have access to systems. They kind of were still leery about, how do I get paid? When is my payroll supposed to come? Who do I talk to? I mean, all those logistical navigation pieces that we really looked at, that we knew we need to fill that gap. And instead of taking a lot of those big orientation days to do that kind of work, we've decided to hire PD specialists that will really look at this in a much, a more strategic way. And so what we've done is we've helped the talent acquisition team by producing a new hire welcome guide. And so in that welcome guide, it's very interactive. They'll come back for a Phase Two piece of the new hire appointment, and they will actually get some personalized attention. And that person who will be Brianna Johansson, she will be talking with each one of them and making sure that they have sign-ins, they have access to Google, they have access to the Internet, everything that they need, so that when they go to orientation or initial teacher training, they can actually focus and be prepared with not only those systems and know understanding what the navigation of our systems look like, but they also will be prepared to actually participate in training. And so some of that, we know, happens a lot with Google, and being signed up to Google is really important, because a lot of our presenters want them to access that information. Plus, we also have surveys that we ask them to take to let us know how we're doing in our training. So for onboarding, that's kind of that piece that we looked at. Upon that new hire guide, Brianna also will be sending out a supervisor guide, going out to whoever the supervisor is, in this case, it would be the principals, and give them some guidance around, how do you acclimate your employee the first time they walk in your building? What types of things should be focused on? Because a lot of principals are really focused in on, what's my first day look like? What kind of meetings do I need to have? How do I set up my staff so that they're prepared in the classroom? How do I organize them in such a way that they are ready for students that first day? We want to give them a little bit more. Where, where the restroom's located in the building? Has anybody given you a building tour? Do you know what the, what the map of the building looks like? Do you know your emergency procedures? Things like that, that they can actually have a guide that's, that's set up for them to actually just help them keep that in the forefront as they're getting ready to meet their new employees firsthand. The next thing we're looking at is that onboarding training piece, so that initial training. We're going to be working very closely with REA leadership on what that orientation setup looks like. Right now, it's three days, two owned by the district, one owned by REA. And we're going to kind of look at what we do during that time. And I, if we can get our orientation, some of that pre-phase done beforehand, then we can really get into some good meaty portions of training for our new teachers. I think that's really important at this point. So we have a, back, back in history, we've been inconsistent, we've had a lack of focus. Now, we're going to have a framework that's set up that's going to be very strategic and very focused with learning outcomes for adults. So that kind of lends me to have, to co-talk with you a little bit more about the bigger picture of talent development. What does that look like? Right now, we have different kinds of phases in talent development for which we can support our employees and especially our teachers. Right now, we look at training as some things that are required for everybody. So what are those things? So orientation, we have onboarding, we have Institute Day, we have mandated compliance trainings, and then we have some learning modules through our LMS, which we want to thank you very much for, getting us started with professional development. And Mrs. Blanchard will talk to you a little bit, a little bit about that. And so those are things we know that we can help with training structures, modalities, how we offer them, how often we present them, so that people feel prepared and valued. I think that really helps with retention in our system right now. The next portion is building our department initiatives. We want to be there to be a hub of support for the district. How do we help departments and how do we help schools really execute their training in a very systematic way? And how can we help better what it is they're doing in helping all of our departments align their trainings to strategic outcomes? And then the other part is development, which you're going to hear a little bit more about from Amanda Sugar around especially of brand-new teachers, and then also some of those development pieces for our pathway work. And I think those two will give you a little bit more of an idea of what our department fun, how our department functions.
Amanda?
Evening. Amanda Sugar, I'm the Director of Teacher Effectiveness, and mentoring is one of the two programs that is a large district-wide undertaking that I oversee. So mentoring, as Diana mentioned, is specifically geared towards the new teachers and their initial phases of teaching. Boots on the ground, what does it look like their first day? How do they greet their students? How do they deliver instruction? So in that, mentoring in the past has been done by three itinerant, centrally-located mentors who then are going out to the buildings to service teachers district-wide. Our first-year teachers receive 30 hours of support, second-year teachers receiving 15. And they previously had these six face-to-face sessions on varying topics. Those topics in the past were like a one-and-done. They showed up for the evening and received content strategically-aligned for the course of the year, and big topics that we've heard teachers need in the past: technology, discipline, SMART goals, for example, assessment. But when we're thinking about those, we need to strategically align them. So our current program has a combination of itinerant and in-building mentors with strategic pairing, taking into consideration the differentiated positions that we have, varied levels of schooling, as well as content. And our specialists, like fine arts, special ed, music, for example, in the fine arts world, trying to pair them with a music teacher, so they're talking apples to apples. It's not a different brand of teaching, I suppose. Their support hours remain the same. That stems right from the Illinois inception of the mentoring program years ago, with 30 hours of support for first year, 15 hours for second year. However, those face-to-face trainings, we've shrunk in from six trainings face-to-face to three that are strategically aligned to the coursework that Kim will bring up in a few minutes, that is aligned and in-depth training aligned to best practices in the classroom, as well as the learning progression of students and where the teachers are developmentally in the course of their year. So really taking into the phase of the new teacher. We made these changes based on program standards from a national organization known as the New Teacher Center. They've published multiple documents that we're kind of living in. One of them is the Mentor Practice Standards, and the other is the Induction Program Standards, which really kind of break it down from the district level all the way down to the building, how we can best be supporting all of the people involved in the program. So that's our new teachers and what kind of development they're receiving, what the sequence is, what the intention behind the sequence is, the mentors and how they're selected, what that criteria is, how they're trained, and then how they are then moving around the district and what kinds of time they're being able to spend with our new teachers in order to increase the effectiveness of the education that's being delivered in our classrooms, as well as then my job and how I support them in the program. All of that then yielding our best results in the classroom and improving student, student learning through our ability to accelerate the effectiveness of our new teachers. So the design of the program is laid out currently in a four-year progression of gradual release. So what you'll notice here in that first year is, like Diana said, they have that new teacher training, that orientation opportunity whereby they get their resources, we make sure they're fully set for their first few days in the building, and then they begin to meet some other new teachers, developing that professional cadre of people, that networking that is so pivotal to them, that they can call someone and say, I'm having a difficulty with this, can you help me? And they're all living the same story. They receive that mentor support and that collegiality at NTO, and it carries with them throughout the year. So you'll notice that one-on-one mentor support assignment is in both Years One and Year Two, with it dissipating in the third and fourth years, still with, though, the aligned coursework and face-to-face check-and-connect sessions that they'll be attending that help them to find their own professional footing and then to grow as professionals, giving our students the very best that they can. So, for example, a couple of summers ago, it'd be the summer of 2017, there was a middle school science teacher who was hired in one of our middle schools, and they were paired with a mentor. And they have worked with the same mentor throughout two years. That teacher, though, has shared that they have a very strong and collegial relationship with which they can lean upon the mentor for support, lean upon other teachers that they met through the program for support, and to now reference their coursework materials, which are strategically aligned to those phases of development of new teachers and their needs. So I will turn it over to Kimberly Blanchard, our Director of Instructional Design, to tell you a little bit more about the pathway coursework the new teachers are working through.
Good evening. Kim Blanchard, Director of Instructional Design. It's wonderful to see you again. As Amanda spoke and Diana spoke about the pathways for professional development, and I know I've spoken to you before, this is a layout for the new teachers. We have worked with the New Teacher Professional Growth Team to build out those four years of coursework that new teachers are working through, most of which is in an online setting. Again, thank you for your gracious approval of the learning management system that we are using to house that. And then the other pieces, as Amanda spoke of, are in that once-a-trimester face-to-face. Each trimester, for the first two years, new teachers are enrolled in a course that is aligned to both the Danielson Framework for Teaching and our strategic plan. And then the third and fourth year of teaching, they're enrolled in two courses, which are, again, aligned to both of those things. In addition to the New Teacher Pathway for Professional Development, we are also working to develop pathways for teacher leaders and special program leaders, as well as all teachers in general, and additional pathways. Those first three pathways are things that will be up and running by next year or already running. For example, the New Teacher Pathway is already up and running. The Teacher Leader Pathway will be up and running next school year, as well as a strand of the Pathways for All, which will focus on becoming a master teacher. In addition to our in-house Pathways for Professional Development, which will allow teachers' movement on the salary scale, we're also partnering with universities to do that as well. Northern Illinois University has a master's degree, which will allow teachers to receive principal endorsement. Rockford University, as many of you know, has created a master's program with an urban education focus that we are now sending our third cohort of teachers through. And we are working with Olivet Nazarene University for an English as a Second Language endorsement for teachers. In addition to those schools, many teachers seek outside graduate credit from other universities. In the past, what this looked like was they would take graduate credit, submit their transcript, and that would apply towards movement on the salary scale. We have found that sometimes some of those graduate credits did not necessarily align to what teachers were teaching or initiatives that would make them greater teachers in the classroom. Now, there is a graduate credit approval process. There is a professional growth team that is working to help develop those criteria. Teachers now submit an application prior to enrolling in a graduate course. That application includes information as to what the course entails, how it aligns to their teaching, how it will make them better in the classroom. Then their, that application is sent to HR, excuse me, sent to HR, where it is checked to make sure it's an accredited university. An approval is either granted or denied. If it is denied, for whatever reason, there is an appeal process, which teachers can go through, and there's a committee that works on that appeal, and that committee includes both REA members and administration. This process is new. As of August, we do foresee that it will continue, but possibly be refined and reach and fine-tuned from what it has begun. In addition to our in-house professional pathways for development and other graduate credit through partnerships or other universities, we do have other supports for teachers. Amanda Sugar, our Director of Teacher Effectiveness, will share some more about those other supports.
Again, so Peer Assistance Review is a program that was approved by the board four years ago. This is our fourth year of inception. Basically speaking, it's a program that was designed to offer teachers additional supports after they've been identified as needing improvement in professional practice. So that's at the end of the process after a teacher receives their summative. They then are triggered to enter the PAR process, working alongside a peer consulting teacher to enhance and grow in their professional practice. So in PAR, it is a collaborative venture jointly created by the administration and the REA that spans a maximum of 90 days and a minimum of 45 days. Those days look a lot like intensive coaching, side-by-side co-planning, co-teaching, classroom supports where the PCT is just another set of hands in the room, the PCT observing and providing feedback, giving identification of resources and strategies. It's the, wow, I see this as a problem, how about you try this? It's the ideas, the generation of information so that we can best reach our students. In that process, the PCTs then are working alongside the administration, providing rated feedback as well for the teachers. And culminating at the end, we do have over half of our teachers that are exiting the PAR process proficient. The last time the board heard an update on this program explicitly was the then on your left-hand side. It was about 1,800 students that had been impacted. To date, though, were over 8,000 students impacted by the program in only the initial year when the PCT is providing support. So that does not account for the years beyond that scaffolding piece. But one of the biggest stories that sticks with me about PAR and its importance, its value in our, in our schools and in our buildings is, one of the teachers who came into the PAR program a few years ago had previously received excellent proficient ratings, found themselves in a place where they had lost their luster. You know, it, life got hard, the teaching got hard, things were changing, and they needed a little bit of fire. So the PCT came in, helped them refine their fire, they exited the process, meeting standards, hitting excellency in a number of areas, and was nominated for the Golden Apple, making it to the final 20 the following year. It's a big, it's a big achievement for the program and for the PCTs that are working alongside our teachers and impacting our students now. So that is one of the other programs that we do offer, but I'll leave it to Matt to kind of pull it all together.
So we've kind of given an overview of the different efficiencies and increased opportunities for our teachers, but we know we're not where we need to be. There are areas that we need to still focus on that are going to be challenges for us. And so moving forward, we've alluded to our enhancement for recruitment of a diverse work staff, something that's going to be in front of us, again, something that we discuss weekly and continue to look at strategies on recruitment. We also are striving to continue with the consistency of a 48-hour window to contact potential employees. Unfortunately, during our peak hiring season, we still have instances where we don't get in contact with prospective employees, and another district offers them, and they accept it, and we lose out on a candidate. And I know Sarah and I talk about this weekly on how unacceptable that is. We need to make sure that we're supporting our schools and the people that they recommend that HR reaches out, and we secure that employee for our students. So that would be something that is a challenge that we continue to work towards. Along those same lines, in the realms of customer service, ensuring that all the people who apply for jobs receive notification that they are not considered as an applicant and were not considered for an interview. So we're setting up the system so that we notify all those applicants, so that we can continue to reach out and make sure that those applicants could be potential candidates and employees in the future. So we want to make sure that we're increasing our customer service with those folks. Around talent development, communication, I think, is going to be the biggest key as we shift. How are we communicating with our teachers, with REA, with our building administrators on what it looks like on bridging that initial training we discussed all the way through the development and retention? Also, how do we communicate to parties involved what that shift's going to be in the preparation and development to move along to become a more and most effective teacher that you can be? Whether that's in your current position, or that's in a leadership position that you may want to take within the teaching realms. And so those are all challenges we know that are in front of us, that we're going to continue to tackle, along with continuing to get better at what we're doing currently. So with that, we will So with that, we will conclude our presentation. And any questions at this time?
Comments or questions from the board? Who would like to start? Ms. McCullough.
Could you just remind me, the 3K for the relocation housing are signed on? Can they get all three?
Potentially. Could they get all three? Yes, I like to reference if we find a unicorn that has all three very hard certifications to get, that could be a potential. The goal is not to give all three, but that is a potential.
And then the other question I had, the turnaround time. So we have lost teachers because, you know, a principal does a rec, and it sits on somebody's desk, as you said, and so the whole electronic piece seems like should have been placed for a while, so I'm so glad to see it. I'm just, let's be positive. But do we have sort of a, are we giving our principals and saying, "This is our turnaround time"? Because it would be a goal for you and a metric that you can follow, but also an expectation would be had, and then they would know to reach out if, you know, that happened.
Yep. We're very vocal with that 48-hour turnaround time. So by the time we receive that recommendation for hire from the principal, we have 48 hours within the HR department to contact that prospective employee. And so that's been verbalized, it's out there, it's public, it's what we hold ourselves to. And so to answer your question, yes, that they know that. And we always encourage principals to reach out to their generalists or to anybody in HR if they feel like somebody hasn't been contacted and something's fallen through the cracks.
So have you tracked that? How are you guys dealing with the 48 hours?
Yes, we do track. We track it on a weekly basis. So that's a metric that I work with Dr. Jared on weekly. So we track how long does it sit in our new hire inbox? So the process that we receive that rec for hire, it comes into a new hire inbox, and then we have Tracy Freeman, our Talent Acquisition Manager. She routes the appropriate rec for hire to the specialists because they represent certain schools, so that we can keep track of all those. So we track how long does it sit in the new hire inbox, and then how long did it take for the specialist to reach out and make that offer?
So my question was, so what do those numbers look like? Are you meeting your goals?
Not every week. The past month and a half, we've exceeded our goal. So we're taking an aggregate weekly and then into the month. What's really going to tell the sign is when we get into our peak hiring season, from April through July, that's really where we're striving to, to make sure that we're hitting that goal. Obviously, you're right.
What is the goal?
48-hour turnaround, 80%. Yep.
80%? That's the number I was looking for. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes. First, thank the superintendent for giving up his time to have us, for us to have a deeper conversation about this. Thank you, the HR team, too. I believe the district's going in the right step. I think we are making the right steps to, that's what's going to pay off at the long run. There's some things that I just want to address, and we'll go from there. One of the things that we spoke was the pathway. You said you had failures. Are you going to have the results that you wanted when recruiting African-Americans? When I looked at the resources that you used from different ethnic groups, the group for African-Americans were substantially low. So I think one of the problems, we need to address that as far as the resources towards that. I think we have a better return off of that. But even deeper than that is that I know we're going out to recruit some, but I think the, if you want the full impact, we're going to really have to address the RU pathway for students, for African-Americans. I think we need to spend at least 60 to 70% of our resources on that. Because if we can help our students locally to jump over the hurdles of getting to teachers, getting their certificates, I think it'll help not only the school district, but it'll help our community. And so I look at the bigger picture on that standpoint. So I would suggest, I would argue with you that we spend most of our money finding hurdles and being more creative to help do that.
We won't argue. I agree. We will continue to strive. I fully agree. We have made great strides with our RU pathway in terms of the number of minority students that are in our pathway. But to your point, Mr. Dixon, the African-American population is one that we're still not where we want to be. And so we are focusing efforts earlier. We need to get in front of middle school students to, we need to engage and try to sell, so that when they get to high school, choose academies and a model that they want to follow, that they're educated and excited, frankly, to get into the field of education. So I agree.
Mr. Connor?
One question is, in terms of metrics, I recall in the welcoming section and several others, they talked about the metrics that will be tracked. So we have essentially, if you will, an approach, a metrics, where we're not trying to track everything, and we have certain things that are more visible. Which of the metrics that we're tracking in these programs will show up in the HR portion of the metrics that we're really putting attention to?
Right. Well, in terms of the larger pieces, it's going to be the metrics of the number of student teachers, from clinical to student teachers that we hire. So our recruitment department is tracking. Are we creating those relationships with universities to attract our clinicals that become our student teachers that we want to become then our teachers? So we're tracking that, and that will show up. That's being tracked on a semester basis in terms of how many we're getting into our organization, and then tracking how many of those potential employees do we actually hire. So that's one large metric. I know Diana and her team are finalizing metrics in terms of the number of teachers that we get through that initial second phase of the new hire, so that they are prepared to take on orientation, so that we can adjust how we do our orientation and what we present. So those are two large pieces that we're going to be able to track in terms of teachers, both from a recruitment and then, we believe, a retention piece.
Okay. And remind me how often we'll hear about that? Is that a once-a-year report back that we'll get?
We certainly can. We can create an annual report for you.
Okay. I guess the other question is, around metrics, so I heard, and I think I heard this correctly, that there's an encouragement to get feedback from teachers on the programs.
Yep.
That would seem to be a pretty, be a pretty big part of this. I think that would be something that I know, I'd certainly like to know, in terms of the population, what percentage actually fill it out and what those results are year after year, I think. Because a lot of these improvements, while they sound very good, I think it's us tracking that over a period of time would make the most sense, yeah?
Absolutely.
Yep. Thanks.
Mr. Escobedo?
So just a quick comment. I mean, you guys know better, you guys are the experts. But when I was looking at the slides, when you show a four-year progression in your development, and then you've got courses such as Strategies to Raise Achievement on the fourth year and Developing a Culture of High Expectations on the third year, and I'm, for me, I keep thinking of the sense of urgency and where we're at, the need that we have right now to raise our achievement. And that being so late, just pointing that out, you know, also just sometimes in industry, and I don't know if that would be applicable to you, but, you know, we have items, when we've got training, sometimes we do training for a week. We have super days where we have offsites and just get a lot of the training upfront or interim sessions, so that you get, you know, while, yes, you may have a bunch of people out for a whole week, you've got a lot of intense training, you know, throughout. So just making that as a common sense.
And just to address the first point, Mr. Escobedo, actually, your three, that's just differentiated. So in years one and two, we're hitting those through the titles of System for Success Planning and Practice. That's all around good teaching and reaching for a better academic achievement. Yours three and four is going to be more differentiated. We've given you some more baseline, some really practical, really good things to make sure that you're really set in good practice within your classroom. Now we can take it to another level. And so we're following that teacher and their progression, so we don't certainly ignore those in years one and two. Those stand out a little bit because those are the differentiated piece where we take the next step.
Yep. Just my, again, my observation is thinking, okay, four years, new teacher, how many students has that teacher seen in that four-year progression? And how much of that training is really needed upfront? Anyway, just making a comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Walz?
It's just time for random HR questions.
Sure, sure.
So we started this year down a significant number of teachers, and one of the things that we've talked about is making, maybe being more aggressive in making early offers. So it's January, have we been making early offers for next year?
So we've pushed up our timeline for advertisements. We've worked with the REA. So yesterday and today, we started our first round of internal postings. So per the contract and practice, people that are in the building, they are having access to the vacancies that we know already. So we know vacancies based off of retirement, because we pushed up the retirement notification. And any vacancy that we've had this year that we know we're going to have next year, which include positions where we've hired end-of-year-only because they're not certified in that specific area, those have all been posted today, yesterday and today. We will get those results back at the end of the day today. We'll do our reshuffling of any movement of teachers. Next week, we still have some displaced teachers because of our school closings. They have access to those vacancies as a priority next in line. We'll place our displaced teachers next week. Once that shuffles through, we then will post the vacancies to REA-only, January 22nd through the 24th. At the same time, our hard-to-fill positions will be posted externally. So our math, our science, our special ed, and bilingual positions that we know are vacant, not only will they be posted for REA teachers to see, but those will be posted out on our normal avenues in terms of posting. Those positions will stay up. We will, we've increased our timeline to bring to the board our non-renewed teachers that will non-renew. That will happen at the end of February. Those then will allow for the other vacancies to happen, and we'll do another round of internals. So we will have early offers in our hard-to-fills, but in our, what we would say, non-hard-to-fill positions, that timeline has been increased by about a month, but that will not go out until the second week in March, I believe.
And I think the difference is, at least what I'm hearing, is that you're saying we're pushing up the timeline for figuring out what positions we have. And I think the concept that, you know, that I had floated anyway, is that you just look at the numbers, look at our average number of openings each year, knowing that, certainly this year, and I think some other years, too, we've started in the hole, and take a leap of faith and simply make offers with the assumption that those positions are going to be open, that there's going to be positions for those people.
Yeah. And I don't disagree. The challenge that we have is when you're competing with other districts and we just offer a position, a science position within the district, and another district can say, "You're teaching science at this school, this is your schedule." We're at a disadvantage. We certainly go along with the idea that we do want to overhire, knowing that we'll have some holes, and we'll still operate that. But it does present a challenge when we're competing against other districts, when there's some specific positions that they can advertise and they can sell, where we're very general. So we're trying with those hard-to-fills. Because we know them now, and we're going to post those, that will be an advantage for us, along with our recruiting incentives when we head out to the jobbers.
And the next topic, which you didn't touch on tonight, which is substitute teachers. We have a similar shortage of substitute teachers. One of the things we've talked about is the fact that for every other surrounding school district, people can apply to become a substitute through regional, and that application is good for every other district other than Rockford, but it is not good in Rockford, which creates some sort of a barrier, a potential barrier for substitute teaching in Rockford. Are we looking at whether that's really necessary for us to have our own separate system? Can we somehow piggyback on regional?
Yep. Actually, I will be bringing to committee the whole next week with new legislation to outsource our substitutes. We have a company that focuses in on substitute teacher and paraprofessionals, and new legislation that started January 1 allows us to do that. And so I'll be presenting to the board with the Insight Company to outsource that service.
So outsourcing, that includes the certification or whatever it is that you call, the approval to actually provide the services?
Yep.
They do it all?
They do it all.
Okay. Back on the aspiring teachers, the university partnerships, one of the partnerships, there were three universities mentioned. One was Grand Canyon University, which I'd never heard of. I'm just curious how we ended up with Grand Canyon University.
We have paraprofessionals and other positions in our district. We have employees that access Grand Canyon online. They have found out about our aspiring teaching concept. The pay and the benefits attracts them because they're kind of second career. And so we follow up with Grand Canyon in terms of the qualifications and understanding what our conditions are. So we were able to actually take a current employee. She is working as an aspiring teacher, and then our hope is to hire her for the fall.
And then the other two, RUIC and ISU. I'm just curious, what are the demographics of the College of Education at these universities? And are they doing anything to expand the diversity of their student population?
They're trying. I don't have the answer in terms of the demographics of their College of Education. I know UIC does have a push for a more, with the urban campus. Our goal is just to try to engage more universities to see what we have out there and not limit just Rockford University and NIU. As I referenced earlier, the ISB committee that I have been selected on, there are five institution of higher ed members on there in terms of fixing the diversity issue in terms of our pipeline. So I think a lot of universities are going through very similar things in terms of number of education enrollees into the College of Education, and then particularly minority candidates into those. So I think they're all dealing with very similar, and I think that's why ISB has, you know, taken this on in terms of policy change and legislation, because I think we're at a point where we're in some dire need of change from PK all the way through higher ed.
Does it still continue to be difficult for people who get degrees out of state to get their certification in Illinois? I know we talked about that issue a few years ago.
It actually, with the legislation change within the last two years, it's actually easier. What the state has done unintentionally is they've actually made it easier for our students in Illinois to go to a different state to get their teaching certificate. We now have reciprocity with those other states. So if you go to the state of Wisconsin and get your teaching license, we will automatically accept that, where in Illinois, you still have to go through the TAP test, potentially the ACT. So we've actually unintentionally made it easier for our high school students to leave the state, get a teaching certificate to transfer back than it is to stay in Illinois, go through all of the hoops and hurdles to get a teaching certificate and a license in Illinois.
So if that's the case, I didn't realize that was the case, does it make sense to start looking at universities in Milwaukee or someplace that may have?
We've done a two-and-a-half-hour radius of Rockford to engage. Part of the struggle, A, is relationship, but then it's the, it's the staff that the university have to come supervise student teachers, and to do that in terms of our relationships with clinicals and students. So that's a challenge that we have to take on. But we have drawn a two-and-a-half-hour kind of radius around Rockford to say that we need to hit all of these universities, all of these metropolitan areas, harder than we have.
Okay. And then one of the things that I had heard this year on the new teacher mentoring, I think if you go back far enough, there was almost no new teacher mentoring. So I'm glad to see that we're creating some robust systems, because I think we did need to do that. What I heard this year is that we may have gone a little overboard and that overloaded some of the new teachers. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we're looking for that Goldilocks spot where we're just right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are we making progress on that?
We are. So we've, Ms. Blanchard referenced the New Teacher Professional Development Committee. Part of where I think we stumbled a little bit was the timeframe in which we were able to roll out this fall with the Schoology contract coming in late August. We weren't up and ready to present all of this to our new teachers during new teacher orientation. And as you roll out anything new, we looked at the new teaching center in terms of best practices and what we rolled out. We listened to the teachers, we sent out a survey, we've met with Don Paul and the committee, we've made some adjustments back to Course 1, and our new course rolled out just last, yesterday on Monday. So we've made some language changes, some task changes, to make sure that the integrity and what we wanted as outcomes were still there, but what was more manageable, we think, for new teachers. So that is a collaborative process that we're engaged in.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Okay. I have, I have one question, and it's not specifically for teachers, but it's for all of employees. And I'm thinking, in my mind, that this connects to the engagement and cultural issues that we've been trying to get, make better. And that is, and it's probably, but I just didn't see it in the orientation thing, where is mission, vision, and values covered for the organization? And what does every employee, whether they're a janitor, a bus driver? And what does every employee, whether they're a janitor, a bus driver, a para, whatever, where do they hear the story of how they connect to raising student achievement?
Yeah, so we're building that into our new hire appointment. That's evolved immensely over the last 18 months in what we've presented. We're also embedding values, and as we roll out values to the organization as a whole through a multi-year approach. And so we are embedding that into what is going to be required, as well as embedding it into some pathway work and development, because we think that we can differentiate and take that to another level as well. But that is being embedded, and I wouldn't say we're 100% fully there yet.
Sure.
But we are building that, because that is important for all employees as they come into our organization.
Okay. All right, good. Okay. I figured it was in there. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to your team. Okay, we will move on then to our action items. The first action item tonight is 13A, which is the Thinking Maps Learning Community License Renewal. This is presented by Dr. Vosberg on behalf of Lathrop Elementary School. Is our motion a second to approve item 13A, the Thinking Maps?
Same.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of action. Item 13A, Thinking Maps for Lathrop.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second item tonight is the three-tier bus scheduling system that Mr. Slife presented at our last board meeting. Is our motion a second to approve this item?
Same.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Segal.
So while there is a time change for start and stop, I noticed on page six of the PDSA that pickup and drop-off times for students would not be affected, meaning that students aren't going to be picked up any earlier than they are now, and are dropped off any later than they already are. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can pull up Mr. Slife to talk about the details. But yes, one of the things that was a contingency for me bringing this forward as a recommendation to the board, is I wanted to make sure that Mr. Slife felt comfortable that no route would start earlier than it does, particularly those that are impacted by the 15-minute earlier start time, nor did we want any route to end, to bring a student home later than is currently brought home. And the average time decreases by about 10%, and there's some really encouraging data that Mr. Slife has shared about, there are literally thousands of students that are going to see pretty substantial times. Anytime you do an average, obviously, it doesn't sound like much to say the average ride time will drop by 1.7 minutes, but when you look at what that really means for our students, there are thousands of students that will see a 10-plus minute reduction in their ride times, because this really disproportionately helps students that have long routes, because there'll be longer routes. But I'll let Mr. Slife add any additional details.
Okay. As far as the ride time is, we have over 1,000 students that are on the buses for an average of 61 minutes. So our longest ride time is 99 minutes. It will get rid of all of those far outliers. Most of our students are within 25 minutes from school and have a 25-minute ride time. But to get where we're at now with that 21.35, or whatever it is, those far outliers will significantly come in. So where the average for a little over 1,000 students are, 61 minutes, they're, those 1,000 kids will be closer to the 50-minute range, so.
Can you?
Yep.
Is that 99 minutes one way?
Correct.
You said 90, right? 90 or 99?
99. It's a, it's a long ride.
Okay. Mr. Connor, you're next.
Yeah. Why don't you remind us of the basic benefits of this one in terms of bus drivers and the amount of savings that you expect out of this?
The biggest, or you want the cost savings, or my driver shortage?
I will take both.
Okay. So for me, the biggest savings for me is my driver shortage. Right now, we've done a lot of different things that we're doing, but we have an extreme shortage. So by going from, right now, we've reduced, well, we increased our route times, reduced our number of routes from 201 last year to 190 this year, to help offset some of the driver shortage, it's still not enough. I have bus prep people that are driving every day. We have program supervisors, field supervisors, dispatchers, all driving periodically throughout the week. We've had occasions where our safety officer, who goes to bus accidents, is driving, our terminal coordinator, and myself even, on a couple of occasions. When we get out of people, when I go drive, if somebody else calls in sick, we have nobody to cover a route. So in the chance where I come in in the morning to drive a route, if somebody else called in, we have the potential right now to not be able to go pick those students up.
So what number will that equate to with the three-tier?
Well, right now, we're at 190. I'm projecting 165 routes. So we will save that many routes, and that right now would put us at a full-staff environment. So that'll save, nobody will get laid off, nobody will lose their positions.
So the first headline is, we would be at full staff with what we have today?
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
And then how about the cost side?
So cost savings, I will need 40 less buses. So at $95,000 to $100,000 a bus, each bus going through a 10-year cycle, over the years, that's going to be quite a, quite a large savings.
So that's for a million?
Right. And that's where my $4 million came with. The first year should be about $600,000.
So 600,000 savings in the first year.
Right.
So there have been a couple of teacher groups that have responded that they're not happy with this. Is there anything we can do to address that concern, or will that just be part of the new system?
It depends what the teacher concern is on.
Well, it's the, specifically, it's been really middle schools. I don't think it's been anybody but middle schools. So it's the later start, I assume.
Right. And getting out at 4 o'clock, and that is, right now, that is what it is. I can't fix, I mean, with this system.
With the three-tier, okay, so that's. The one comment I will make is that one of the things we've talked about is more flexible transportation for certain programs over the years. And this is not the time to introduce that, but I am going to bring it up to say that, hey, you know, if we are saving money, one of the things that we want to do is encourage things like extracurriculars and support that as much as we can, and special classes, there's all kinds of things that we've talked about. So I think if we do go to this three-tier, the one thing that I would say is, even though it wasn't a huge group of teachers, frankly, it seems like there was enough that even though going with this from the district standpoint is really pretty compelling. However, when somebody takes the time to raise their opinion, it obviously represents a concern that teachers have. And so what I'd ask the administration to do is see, you know, what the effects are, and if there's anything, if there's any, any approach that we can use to help that, and I'm not saying there is, but I'd at least like us to acknowledge that there was that objection, and that we should at least do some kind of follow-up to that. So really, two things for follow-up. One is that we talk about the flexibility in transportation, and two is that because we've had the concerns, even if we go with this, which I think we will frankly, that we listen to the concerns and see if there is anything that we can do about it. Okay?
Mr. McCullough?
When we heard from the Flynn Middle School, that was before we made the change to 15 minutes, was it not?
Correct.
Didn't we respond to their concern? Because initially, it was going to be a half hour later.
Right.
So we did, we did listen, but we weren't able to bring it back to the full where we're at now. So I do, don't want to think that it fell on deaf ears with the administration, and I appreciate the fact that they did make that attempt. I, personally, I hear a lot of concern from middle school, and I truly understand it. My question about that is, how will that affect the interface with the intercurricul, with the extracurriculars? I mean, so with our neighboring school districts, we do have middle school extracurriculars outside.
Yes, we do.
So will we be taking the students out of class early to do that, or will we still fall within a time parameter that that will not affect their academics?
I think that'll depend on each coach, and the times of the games, and where they're going, to be seen. I know Matt.
I mean, do we talk with other districts so that you?
A great deal of our inter-scholastic competition is intra-RPS at the middle school level. For example, the volleyball league that we have right now is all RPS versus RPS competition. So there are events like cross-country meets and other things that involve other schools that are out, and it's obviously outdoor sports that have the greatest impact because of the need for natural light. But we worked extensively with Mr. Parker, our athletic director, and he felt like moving it from 4:15 to 4:00, while not ideal, was something that he felt was workable. Dr. Vosberg, would you agree that the athletic perspective can support the move now that it was adjusted from 4:15 to 4:00?
Yes.
Yep.
And again, the biggest concern is taking students away from their academics. And I know that, I asked if we had looked at, and you can ask, answer publicly, but looked at changing and making the high schools later, and that there was even more of an impact with that one with taking students out of classes, because we have more extracurriculars that are outside the district instead of inter. I really hope people can understand, wow, the money savings is important. And by the way, is the 600K after we get our money back from the state, or is that just a savings?
That's just an overall savings.
Okay, because in reality, we get, what percentage of that would we?
We get about 75% back of what we spend.
Right. So it's, the money is not the biggest part of it, because 75% that we're going to get back out of the 600,000, is that what I'm hearing, is 150,000 is really the savings? But 40 buses is huge. I get that. But as I, as I listened to the gentleman about, from Eisenhower, I understand that, you know, we have, we have teacher shortage, and by having to change a schedule, what I heard was maybe this will affect whether or not we can even fill those positions. But the reality is, if you can't get the kids to school, and we don't have enough drivers, I mean, it's great to say, please don't change this, but give us a solution. What is the solution going to be if we don't have enough drivers? If we're taking the RBMA's, the guys who are supposed to be, and women who are supposed to be working around the district, off of their jobs to drive buses? If we're taking the dispatchers off to drive buses, and the supervisors, and people from, other people aren't doing their jobs because they're having to drive buses because we can't get enough bus drivers? And so that's, and because we can't get enough bus drivers, we have less routes, and because we have less routes, our students are on the buses longer. So, you know, the impact, there's just this domino effect. So I'm, as much as I'm not thrilled with kids having to be in school till 4 o'clock, it's not outside the realm of doability, is that a word?
Yes.
For families. So for, from that perspective, I would, I would want to support it, and especially to have those kids on the bus for a less period of time, because we are affecting how much time the elementary, as well as the middle, and as well as the high school. And we all know if kids are on the bus too long, you know, if I were a parent and I'm, my child was going to be on a 99-minute bus ride, I'd either be driving them, but a lot of our parents can't afford to do that. And so it'd be nice if, if they had the opportunity to go to a different school. And so that's my last question. So if we weren't transporting to the charter schools, because there's a group of bus drivers that we need to hire just to transport to charter schools, would we be able to have enough routes without changing to a three-tiered system?
My mic's going back on. The charter schools, right now, I'm using seven buses at Legacy, four at each of the Galapagos, so that's eight, and then nine more at Jackson. And they have some different start times. So if we just discontinued, it would help some. It would, it'd give me a short-term help, but it wouldn't solve the problem we would still have, because there are some of those routes that we can fit in, and some of them we can't. So it would help, but it would not.
So that's 19 buses, and because, was that eight and seven and four? My point is, is that, you know, they're all our students, all the charter school students are still district students. But if they have more flexibility than we do, because we are trying to do all middle school, all elementary, and all high school in a similar timeframe, would that have helped to make the change? And by asking them to change their start times, because we're trying to accommodate their, their need, but?
Right. And in, in this start time package, we have changed all the charter schools as well. So.
Okay.
Worked with them. So Legacy has, has agreed with our time. Jackson didn't like it, and we changed it. Actually, it's not on your copy, because it just happened yesterday. But they're going to go eight to 4 o'clock, as well as the middle schools, which actually helps us out a little bit more. And then I still haven't heard back from Galapagos, but they all did get changed.
I think that's really good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo, I think you're next.
Yeah, I'll be a broken record, and I'll find a way to tie this into educational achievement. Because we just heard that, you know, 10, 15 minutes is significant to the educational day. And so, you know, so we've got 30, 40-minute rides to some of the students, and I guess two things is, one is, just like we've heard a lot of feedback from teachers, or some feedback from teachers, I'd be interested in hearing feedback on educational achievement, and what can we do to improve urgently? Two is, all right, so this is, you know, wild, just comment, but, so we've got 40-minute rides, whatever it is, both ways. What can we do, and I think I've made this comment or talked to you about this before, but what can we do to use that time?
Right.
What can we possibly, could we use that savings and potential buses to turn these buses into educational labs, where they can hear audiobooks, where they can view funny educational videos, get them hooked in science, get them hooked in tidbits that, you know, we have so much stuff now with audio and video, that, so.
We, there are companies out there now that offer Wi-Fi on buses, which would be constant while the kids are in the bus. I inquired about finding out how much it would be to, you know, equip 20 of our buses just for field trips. It's, it's kind of expensive if I only do 20 buses. If you do 200 and some buses, it's a bigger price tag, but the price comes down. There are many ways to, to offer that type of system out there. We could research and, and see what we could put in buses.
Okay.
So, mobile classroom. Yeah.
Sounds like, sounds like a job for curriculum development. Mr. Dixon, I think you're next.
I guess what I heard, some of the concerns were, from parents, were saying that their middle schools, because if you have your middle schools coming 15 minutes later, and you have your high schoolers leaving 15 minutes early, that's a 30-minute additional gap that a parent might not be there. So they'd normally have their high schooler, student watching them, make sure they get to, the middle school gets to the bus. But, so those are some of the concerns. So as a district, have we addressed that, that by, maybe they can drop the schools? Or what have, what have we done to address that, far as if we drop them off? Because if they started 15 minutes later, that means that school won't open the door to 15 minutes later. So do we have something that's available for the parents?
I, I'm going to assume that each school, especially, I don't, elementary-wise, but there's different Y care programs and things like that for students. In the evening, those high school kids will be home earlier, so they would be able to help in a more. help in a more critical time in the afternoon than in a sleepy time in the morning.
Is it a, so do we have anything far as?
I think it all comes down to partnerships with the school. The vast majority of our elementaries have before, you know, have, currently have before-school programs, many have after-school programs. We have a 21st Century Grant, so it just comes down to a partnership between the parent and the school. The adjustments in the start times aren't going to dramatically change those relationships in most cases. So it'll come down to probably a little more of a balance of after-school programming now for elementaries and probably a little bit more before-school programming for middle schools. But the vast majority of our schools have some kind of offering either before or after school.
Mr. Rollins, you're next.
Yeah, I don't want to continue this too much longer, other than to agree with most of what has been said. This is all being driven by the bus driver shortage, which is not a Rockford problem. It's, it's actually, there was an article in the Tribune within the last week or week and a half about it's a statewide problem, and there was actually an article or a news piece on one of the national stations that it's a national problem. And part of that is the economy, part of that is the low unemployment rate. Part of it may be permanent shifts in demographics and the number of people who are looking for what is essentially seasonal part-time employment. I agree that this is not ideal, and I've got a middle schooler, and I'm married to one of those special people who teaches in middle school. And so I do understand the challenges, but I also understand that we have other challenges too, which have been alluded to, and I just want to emphasize that. We have kids who are riding the bus for over an hour each way, and we have people who are supposed to be fixing our buildings who are driving buses, and they're not able to do the jobs for which we hired them because we're using them to plug in the absences, the gaps in our, in our bus drivers. The only thing that I'll, I'll add, I guess, is it, some of this may not be permanent. If the economy turns, and that could happen, we may be in a position to go back to a, you know, a two-tier bus route. But if we get rid of all of our buses, that's going to be very costly for us to do. So I don't know what your plan is for the buses, but I would just ask that you consider maybe not immediately selling 40 extra buses and keeping them around for a while so that if, in fact, the economy turns the other direction, which I'm not betting it wouldn't do, then we are able to hire more bus drivers or find it easier to hire more bus drivers, that we may be able to go back to a two-tier bussing system if we think that's better for the kids.
Okay. Good discussion. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the three-tier bus scheduling system.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We'll move on to our remaining items, which are board policy revisions. Without objection, we'll do these as a group.
Yep.
Okay? So I'll take a motion then and a second to approve item 13C through 13J, which are all board policy revisions that were covered last week and in your packet.
So moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, all right. Any discussion? The coordinator called the role on the approval of the board policy revisions.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. We are now into new business, which I'm sure Mrs. French is thrilled that we're finally getting to her. So you are up next, talking about linking talent to opportunity MOU.
Thank you. I'm Bridgette French, College and Career Readiness, here this evening presenting to you a memorandum of understanding between Rock Valley College and Rockford Public Schools to allow us to provide dual-credit opportunities to our students. And we talked about this in depth when I was here presenting the master scheduling proposal. And essentially, what the MOU does is it outlines the roles and responsibilities of both the district and Rock Valley College as we offer these dual-credit courses. So right now, as you look at the agreement, we only have one course listed, and that's because we're only offering one course at this time. That is CRM 120, which is criminal investigation being taught at all four of our comprehensive high schools. Mr. Segal asked if we had plans to expand these dual-credit opportunities, and the answer is absolutely yes, we do. But we really wanted this to be our proof of concept before we expand those opportunities. I believe Mrs. From provided to you a list of all of our pathways and the industry certification, AP credit, and dual-credit options that students have that are connected to each pathway. And we have many dual-credit opportunities that are in the planning stages currently. Are there any questions at this time?
Mr. Segal.
I don't believe that report actually made it out to all of us.
Oh, okay.
But I do have it in an email. I'll share it with everybody.
Okay.
The only question I have is, assuming this class is successful, do you think then for the next calendar school year, we'll have a list of others?
Yes. So part of the agreement with Rock Valley really had to do with working out the qualifications for our students to obtain the dual credit. And we've been having a lot of extensive conversations around that. And so we really want to see how our students succeed in this class, which we believe they will do well. We've seen their semester grades, and we've seen some pretty significant success in this class. So the answer is yes, but we have to do some curriculum work.
Okay.
And we'll do that over the summer.
So there's no estimate right now, how many you think might be reasonable?
Well, we'll make sure that you get the list that will show all of the courses connected to the pathways. Another thing that we're working on is with our Project Lead the Way courses. Currently, there are universities around the nation that accept that third course in the sequence for college credit, but there aren't a significant amount of colleges in the state of Illinois that accept the credit for those classes. So we're working with Rock Valley on an agreement that would allow them to accept the credit for students that decide to go there and continue their educational career.
My, my question, Mrs. French, is about what's, what's in it for Rock Valley? You know, I mean, does, I mean, I'm sure they struggle with financial stuff, and so does, do students that get dual credit through Rock Valley, through high school, do they tend to then go on to Rock Valley and finish an associate degree there? Or is it a recruitment strategy for Rock Valley?
It is a recruitment strategy for Rock Valley. There's also a small financial impact to Rock Valley, so we pay $50 per student.
Right.
Which is a very minimal fee compared to what a student would pay for credit at Rock Valley. But yes, the answer is yes. So if students aren't qualified to get the credit, meaning they don't meet the SAT, the GPA, or the Accuplacer college entry exam, they'll get articulated credit. And the difference between dual credit and articulated credit is dual credit transfers to most any institution, whereas articulated credit would only be accepted at Rock Valley. So there is a recruitment strategy there for them, but also a large percentage of our students do go to Rock Valley. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a partnership that makes sense for our students.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. French? Now, this will come to our board meeting on January 22nd for our approval.
Thank you.
One more question.
How many students, I was trying to, I didn't see, how many students are we doing for this program?
Currently, we have one section, one class running at each high school for this current dual-credit course, which is listed in the agreement. Average class size is 28 to 30.
Okay.
Yes. For the year, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is board policy revisions. Mrs. Odeley is going to present those two. Maybe?
All right. The first policy that I'm going to talk about is Board Policy 5.260, which is student-teachers. And the change here reflects state law requirements, which indicate that student-teachers cannot be hired or placed in a district until they have completed their criminal background history check. So that's a fairly.
No-brainer?
Yes. Okay. I wouldn't put it that way, but all right. The second policy is Board Policy 5.280, Educational Support Personnel Policy. And this also reflects state law. We're a little behind the times. The last change was in 2012. Since then, it's no, the requirements for paraprofessionals is no longer called a certification, it's called a license, an educator license with the endorsements as a paraprofessional. And so it has some outdated language. It also talks about some funding under Title I or Part A. All of that is, is no longer relevant. So it just does some cleanup language.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, these will come to us for our vote on January 22nd at our next board meeting. Are there any further comments or agenda recommendations for the board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Seconded.
By Mr. Segal. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:45.